For the beautiful day today, the change in seasons, we just thank you so much for your creation. Yes, as God and direct us that we would make decisions that would honor you. We ask it in name of Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Honor and protect this flag. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, one state, under God, one community.
All right, I don't have any sheets for public comments, so we're gonna move in. There's no sheet, sir. Clapp Saddle, go ahead.
Okay, Judge and Commissioners, a lot of questions been going around county about the county judges' payments in twenty, in the 2019 fiscal year. Also questions about the auditorium bathroom. I'm sorry, okay, better. And then questions about whether the budgets have been balanced. So far as what you were paid, Judge, the budget to actual reports that the auditor produced, which he told me were correct, showed that you got considerably more than you were entitled to. The treasurer has recently indicated that there was a miscoding that explains it. The point is, all of these questions could be answered if you and the auditor and the treasurer produced the bank records, the bank statements that the county attorney asked for last year and has not been given. He was given two months out of the thirty-six months he asked for. Also, the commissioners have told me that they were denied access to the banking records. And the auditor had told me that they had full access. And auditor also told me that the county attorney had all the records that he asked for. That's not true. Okay, these records would prove up whether you got paid more than you should have, would prove up what happened with the bathroom at the auditorium, would show whether the budgets were actually balanced or not. To the, it's kinda strange that y'all haven't produced those records for at least a half year now. The county attorneys asked for them repeatedly, he hasn't gotten them. So, what I'm gonna do today is do a request for public records under the Texas Public Information Act.
I don't maintain any records, sir, there's your stuff back.
Produce those records so that we can prove what has happened. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's all that, so we'll move into the, excuse me. Move into the consent agenda on page ten. Alonso Morales, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventeen cents, motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstention.
Motion carries. Page twelve, Commissioner Bruins, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. Motion to approve, please.
Motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Motion carries. Page twelve, Goliad Auto Parts, a hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents.
Motion to approve, please. You got the motion, Judge?
Need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Motion carries. Page fourteen, Highway Garage, eight hundred and ten dollars. Motion to approve, please.
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
One abstention.
Remain near the consent agenda. If there are no questions, need a motion to approve that, please?
I have a question. On the approval of budget transfers, do we have any budget transfers? I didn't see any.
Anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Need a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, I need a motion to remove from the table to review and accept the interlocal agreement between Goliad County and the Education Service Center, Region nineteen, Allied States Cooperative.
I move, do we remove it from the table?
Need a second, please?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, review and accept interlocal agreement between Goliad County and Education Service Center, Region nineteen, Allied States Cooperative. Mr. Fredericks?
And this is a letter from Education Service Center slash Allied States Cooperative, stating that they are a buying co-op that caters to counties, among other entities. There's no membership fee. I highlight it in yellow so y'all can find and see what I'm talking about. Any questions?
Is this the same, I have a question. Is this the same kind of a deal as the Buy Board?
Buy Board, Sourcewell.
Is Buy Board, is it a?
Tips.
Is it a membership, do you have to pay to be a member of Buy Board?
Not to my knowledge. Now, if you're a vendor, I'm pretty sure you have to pay. But this, this is free.
Okay, all right. But this is just another way to buy?
That's right.
Without going through RFPs?
And I think, that's correct. And I think this really started out with schools like the tips. I think it was started out by school districts.
Got it.
Have we come across anybody that we do business with that uses this? Are they mostly Buy Board or?
I did not look. But I mean, it clearly states on here that there's no fees.
I got one more question. Are we, are we interested in a intercept? I mean, you have a staple to the back here, six, seven pages of this body scan thing?
I'm gonna let the sheriff discuss that. But I mean, this is what we would be buying through then. And this was, this, what you have there, I will tell you this, it was included in the budget for last year. That was approved by Commissioners Court.
The body scan? For the sheriff or for the count, or for the courthouse?
No, for the sheriff's office.
I think it falls under COVID protection, it saves the jailers from having to make direct contact in many cases when they're booking someone in.
Any further questions?
Any other questions?
But all's we're approving right now is to use this cooperative, right?
Right.
That's right.
There's no invoice attached or anything like that. I just wanted to follow up with y'all and let y'all know that there were no fees.
Right.
I'll make a motion that we accept the, the interlocal agreement between Goliad County and Education Service Center, Region nineteen.
Need a second, please?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Morales, discussion action on road use agreement between Goliad County and North Houston Pole.
Thank you, Judge. North Houston Pole is the company that the contractor is replacing the large transmission line poles on the existing right-of-way. They're gonna do, get rid of the wooden poles and put up steel poles. And this is just a regular road use agreement that we have on our website. And they have agreed to the terms of the agreement that's in here. If anybody has any questions. Well, anybody can use that electricity that goes through there. I mean, this, this is, the contractor, North Pole, is the contractor that is changing out, doing all that equipment, changing.
Need a motion to approve that, please?
So moved, Judge.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion action to approve listing salvaged surplus IT equipment on govdeal.com, Andy?
This is just a request to list all the old obsolete or salvaged computers, monitors, printers, whatever else I have in my office. If you've been in my office lately, you know I'm running out of room in there. And I'd just like to go through that stuff and put it on GovDills and get it out of there.
I have a question, have we already, have we already decided that they are salvaged or?
They will not be put in use again for the county. There, a lot of those computers are old. The monitors and printers are in there because they're inoperable or they're too small to use.
Any other questions? If not, I need a.
Have you looked at any other? I had hell with GovDills on our tractor, I mean, or there's some other?
I'm not familiar with any others that we've used. Lee has a GovDills account and she's pressed for time, so I was gonna take the pictures and try to do the listing for them. And basically, the choice is to put them on GovDills and get a few bucks off of them and go back to the general fund, or we're gonna have to pay somebody to come and haul them off. So, I'd rather just take what we can get and get it out of there. And I did check with the school, they weren't interested in our treasures. When we put on GovDills, they'll have to come and pick.
They'll have to come pick them up.
And I, I think Lee told me that the GovDills is set up so the buyer pays any fees.
Yes, they pay all the fees, whatever they buy.
We're not on the hook for anything, as far as I know.
The only thing I might add, Andy, if whatever salvage you don't get rid of or that goes, doesn't sell on gov.deals, we can get rid of it at the Sarah hazardous waste cleanup thing, don't they, they pick up that computer equipment?
If they'll allow us to, you know, take bulk load out there, cause.
I mean, whatever's left, if any is left.
Right. Hopefully, what I'd like to do is just bundle, you know, a stack of computers and put a low price on there and just try to get it out the door.
Put it on like a pallet or whatever.
Yeah.
Motion to approve, Judge?
Need a second?
I'll second.
He'll second.
Did you say you seconded?
I seconded, yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Presentation of twenty twenty-one racial profiling report.
As you are aware, every year, we are required, it's law enforcement, to present to the governing body of the county, the racial data profiling report that we submit to the state of Texas. Y'all should have that in front of you. I'll answer any questions that anybody might have.
I don't have one.
I don't have it either, sir.
Oh, y'all didn't receive it? It was supposed, I got an email that it was all gonna be printed out for y'all today. So, I am more than happy to hand it out and y'all can pass it down the line and take a look at it.
Oh, wait.
We have it?
Oh, wait.
It's the same basic numbers and report that you receive every year, based off of our traffic activities.
Go ahead.
There's really not much to it, to be quite honest with you. It's a piece of legislation that was passed in an effort to try to discourage law enforcement from doing their job. And now we're required to do this every year. That's really what it was meant to do.
Any questions?
Make a motion, we accept the racial profiling from the sheriff's office?
Need a second, please?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Consider approval of Cobwebs technology as paid for by Operation Lone Star Grant, Sheriff?
What we have is Cobwebs is investigative tool, software, that was made available to us through Operation Lone Star. I presented this to, to the governor and to the director of DPS. Within three weeks, DPS then went and acquired it for themselves. So, obviously, it, it has some value. Doesn't cost our local taxpayers any money, it's a hundred percent out of the grant. And it will afford us technology that allows us to conduct more thorough investigations that deals with cellphone technology and combines with social media activity. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question, would this be in car or just at the?
No, sir, this is kinda like the Leap Links you're familiar with, where it's, we have one user per, per office. Under our grant, it provides Goliad County Sheriff's Office with, with a user. It provides the Department of Homeland Security with a user, Brooks County, Refugio County, and the Kingsville Task Force. We all have come together, along with some other agencies, to form Task Force Lone Star, working under this grant we received from the governor. And so, we're gonna, we're gonna begin that effort and the investigative side. This tool is a desktop tool for that, yes, sir.
Need a motion to approve this, please?
So moved, Judge.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Discussion action on the ARPA revenue money. Commissioner Bruins?
Yes, sir. Kenneth and I went to a college station this last week for classes, education, continuing education. And the big, the most talked about was the ARPA money given to us by the federal government. And the guidelines and things like that. About six hours, we sat through classes on this. But had some questions, cause we, we haven't really spoke much about this money. And so, we got a, the treasurer report here saying there's, it is coded. And like they said, it should go into the general fund under ten million. And so, we have seven hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight and eight cents. So, so my first question was, is, is this the total amount that we've received so far or? Seven hundred and fifty. Okay.
Where, where are you seeing all these numbers?
Oh, Brian, on the back page of that, Brian gave us that, he highlighted that in yellow.
What fund number is it?
Uh, eighty-six. About half.
It's on the last page.
About halfway down.
It's highlighted in yellow. Okay, I got it, finally, got it.
Okay, and, and then they talked about end of the year reports?
We report, well, Pam is reporting to them, I believe, on a quarterly basis.
Okay, and?
But I mean, there really hadn't been any expenditures, other than that small one that I was telling you.
So, some of it has been spent?
Yeah, cause I mean, the original amount was about seven hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Okay.
And it's seven hundred and forty-something thousand today.
Okay, have, have we received the information where it was spent and?
No, no, we, we have a check that came through court.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Nothing is spent without it coming through court.
Right, I agree, I knew, but, well, you said it was seven hundred and fifty-five thousand.
No, the total amount of the original plan was approximately seven hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Okay.
I mean, not an even amount, but it's, that's in the ballpark.
Right, okay. Okay, and then some of these other counties have set up like a committee to, and the committee can't make decisions, but they can come up with ideas on where the, this money can be spent, or where it's needed. And of course, they talked about it's always better that long-term, something that we're seeing long-term. And of course, they said, don't use it for pay raises and things like that, because the next year, you don't know, you're not gonna have that money to come in. So, has, have we, has anybody discussed what we are planning to do with this?
The only discussions that I'm aware of were when we did the budget. I haven't been involved in any discussions thereafter.
Okay. Okay. Okay, they just said, you know, that you should be, you know, should get a report. And we said, well, we hadn't received anything, we hadn't heard of anything.
Well, the report doesn't go to Commissioners Court, it's sent in.
Right.
To the federal government.
But we haven't spent anything, so therefore, there's nothing really to report.
Like I said, we spent a small amount of money.
And what was that on?
I told you, I'd have to look it up and let you know.
Okay, okay.
The original amount, again, make sure we're all on the same page, was approximately seven hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Okay.
And what the difference is, is about, what, ten, twelve thousand, I'm gonna say?
Yes.
And if you'd like, we can put it on, we can put it on the agenda. But, but again, every expenditure of this grant and any other grant comes through court. If you look at your accounts payable, you see all those different departments on there, on the very last page. Like, how many of y'all today know that we're paying infinity for cutting, the second cutting of our fiber optic over here on Fannin Street?
We brought that through court, I remember that.
This is the second one, this is the second one.
Right, the second one.
But I'm just saying.
We know.
I saw it on a checklist, I know it's there.
Yeah, me too.
When I got it.
And this might be a little off the subject, but I, I was, I saw the access that every one of y'all were given to the bank statement online. And I don't know who has said that they don't have access, but I saw, when Brian set them up, they, and I was able to log in using the temporary password, didn't change a thing. And I can tell you today that, to my knowledge, not one of y'all have ever, besides Commissioner Brumby, not one of you three has logged in.
That's not true. I've logged in. And I wanna tell you that when I did log in and I tracked it down to, there was three specific accounts that I can recall that I was denied.
Well, if you can log in, you can get into every account.
I got into everything but the three accounts that I was trying to get to. And I was told I have to go through the administrator to get access to them, which he had already said he'd give us access to everything.
When this, when you set this up, you don't pick and choose. And it's not for, you might have.
I'm just telling you what I was told.
What accounts did you not have access to?
The treasurer's fund, the payroll account.
The payroll account gets swiped every time a payroll. All we do with that money is, when we get done with the payroll, say it's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, I take the money from the treasurer's report or account, and I put it in the payroll and hit send, and that money's transferred directly to the bank. There's never any excess in there, that's a transfer-only account.
It's been a while since I tried to do it, but the two times that I did, I was denied. I'm sticking to what I said.
You were given total access of the county?
Come up tomorrow, we'll, we'll use your credentials and log in. Okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
Any other questions?
Can, can you get us that, that expenditure that, that we did? That one you said you'd say you'd go get it, not tonight, but that we spent, yeah. That'd be great, okay. That, that's all I had is, is we, huh? Oh, you can email it to me, that's fine. Or email it to all of us, that'd be fine. Yeah, yeah, do it to everybody, please. That was it, I just, we, we took this class and, and they, it was, I mean, they, they went over every aspect of this, of this fund. And we just, we haven't heard of anything in there. Again, some of the other counties are setting up committees to, to see where this money's needed, cause you have till twenty-six to spend it. And, and if you don't spend it, it's just like anything else, it goes to somebody else, yeah. And, anyway, that's, I just wanted to see where, where we were at on, on this fund.
Is that all you have, Commissioner?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right. Anyone have a public announcement? If not, I need a motion to adjourn, and then we're gonna open a special meeting immediately afterwards.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Need a second, please?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. The, oh, it's time for public communication again. Mr. Clapp Saddle? Okay. Sheriff, you wanna come up and explain the purchase of one vehicle for Goliad County Sheriff's Department from abandoned vehicle fund or asset forfeiture fund?
Judge, members of the court, what I've asked for is, I guess, do y'all have the request and the legal document? Do y'all have the legal document as well? Is it attached in there? No, that's the memorandum. Okay, all right. What has happened is, under this Operation Lone Star grant, we received three new employees under that grant. We have located and we've hired the individuals that we need to hire for that Operation Lone Star grant. What we really need is to be able to put those individuals out on the street. We have very specific performance requirements under this grant, unlike a lot of previous grants. There's a whole lot of things that we have to meet as far as our field performance, and so, I need to get those guys out on the street. Unfortunately, we don't have the extra vehicles to get them on the street immediately. So, what we have run into is, as y'all are aware, we came for bid for three vehicles. I don't know if you are aware, but you just really can't hardly buy any trucks or SUVs right now. The auditor and I have had quite a bit of discussion about it. We talked to Sillsby Ford, who said they have sixty-eight hundred trucks and SUVs on back order right now they cannot get. So, what I have decided that the only way to get these individuals on the street while we go out and try to get the grant money vehicles is to purchase some vehicles out of abandoned vehicle and/or forfeiture funds, which are not general revenue funds, don't cost the taxpayers any direct, any money. They come out of revenue generated by the sheriff's office. So, we have one vehicle there, one truck that we were able to find after visiting with the attorneys. I was able to get a legal opinion as far as how to proceed. So, I have purchased one vehicle out of the abandoned vehicle fund. What I would like to do is get authorization from the court to go out and locate and purchase a second vehicle out of our asset forfeiture fund. That way, I can take those vehicles and I can move our fleet around to get those interdictors on the street. I have one individual who, until we do get the bid vehicles squared away, will be operating a seized vehicle that is now in Goliad County's name, that we took off of a trafficker. So, we're utilizing that one for our investigator, for the commander, for the Operation Lone Star. But for the two interdictors, I need to get them on the street. So, what I'm asking is for your authorization for me to locate and to purchase a vehicle to be able to get our guys out on the street. And right now, if you can't immediately. And right now, if you can't immediately purchase, you will not get it. I'll tell you that, uh, I went to the jail commission hearings, uh, on Thursday. I checked dealerships in Austin. I stopped at every dealership on the way back to Goliad. Not one vehicle matching our needs at any of the dealerships. Uh, we've checked all the dealerships in the area. No vehicles are currently sitting on the lots that match our need for law enforcement use. Uh, I went to San Antonio on Saturday, was there till nine o'clock at night, looking for vehicles, couldn't find any. I found one used truck, and the guy told me that had 11,000 miles on it, still under warranty. And he told me he'd call me if it was available, and he has never called me. The dealers are telling me that if there are vehicles on, on the lots, they last, uh, hours, not days now. So they're disappearing. So when I find one, I need to be able to get it. Sunday after church, uh, I was, uh, told that Port Lavaca Ford had one. I drove down there and it had a, uh, it had a window hanger on it, said, "Sold to the Calhoun County Sheriff's Office." So I was out of luck. So I'm searching high and low, but in order to actually pull the trigger and purchase a vehicle, I'm gonna need your permission. So I went to, uh, Cullen, Carstner, Sirdan, and Cullen, uh, Law Firm. Uh, I posed this to them. They, uh, gave me a legal opinion. I'll pass it so y'all can look at it before y'all make any decisions. They gave me some options. Uh, they said that basically, under these unforeseen circumstances, that y'all, and the fact that we're under an emergency declaration, y'all have the legal authority to provide, provide me with a one-time ability to go out and find and purchase a vehicle without going through the bidding process. 'Cause if we go, there's nobody on buy board that will supply us a vehicle right now, 'cause all those guys are thousands of vehicles behind, as far as in line to get them. So I need to be able to find a vehicle, and I need to be able to purchase it right away. And so that's all I'm asking for, is for one vehicle. So I will, I guess I'll hand this here and you can look at it and pass it down. And then if you gentlemen have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Thank you.
Okay, I have a question.
Go ahead.
That, you say that you have grant money, so are you, are you proposing to be able to get reimbursed?
No, no, sir. This, these vehicles are gonna be purchased out of asset forfeiture. And so when those other three-
I understand that, but, but does the grant pay for the, in the original grant? Not-
We have different parameters for the grant. The grant, we have to go out and we've gotta go to bid or buy board, one of the two. So these veh, this vehicle will not be eligible for reimbursement under that grant.
Will not be, will not be eligible.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
The, the Cullen, Cullen, uh, Law Firm, right, Cullen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, they, they were suggested also, while we're at the meeting, to use for advice, since we don't have a, a county attorney in-house to advise us on different things. What, do you know what they're charging?
I don't know what their hourly rate is, no, sir. But I will tell you that I, I've used them when I was at the city of Victoria and the county of Victoria. And as far as government law goes, there's nobody really more versed than them in this, in this area. You know, the only thing, the only one that I would say is, uh, a level above is, uh, is Allison Bass Law Firm. And I've dealt with them quite a bit, too.
Well, it's somebody we can, can go sit down with and, and discuss things. I think we're gonna need to put that on the agenda to, uh-
Casey Cullen is a good one.
To allow us to, to, uh-
He says I have a habit of bringing him complicated questions he's never had before.
Anyone else? Need a motion to approve this purchase, please?
Authorization to purchase.
I think we need to make the motion to see on the second vehicle. We, we voting on which vehicle?
Already, already bought the first vehicle, because as you can see in there, uh, I can legally purchase one, but I can't purchase two. So I used, I used abandoned vehicle fund, which is what we get from our impound yard.
But I think the motion, the way I read that, needs to be worded so that this is to protect the, uh, safety of our citizens and-
Yes, sir. That is correct.
You see what I said?
Yeah, there's specific language in there that, you know-
I'll make the motion, but let me see if I can read it right.
I'm not sure if attorneys get paid by the letter or the hour, but either way, they're doing good.
Okay, then I'll, I'll make the motion. I'll make a motion that we, we purchase the second patrol vehicle that is necessary to protect and preserve the public health and safety of our citizens.
Need a second, please?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Public announcements?
Judge, I got something. I received a letter, if I can find it, the other day. And I thought it was a nice compliment to our volunteers. It's regarding that fire that was out in, on the prairie. It says, "We at Wexford Ranches would like to take the opportunity to thank all of the individuals that responded to the Luka Fire, January 28th. From the gentleman who called the fire in when it was spotted, to the volunteers, fire chiefs, the airmen, the teamwork between everyone always amazes. With most of the fire department made of volunteers, we thank you all for you, what you do to help a fellow neighbor. We appreciate the sacrifices these men and women make to keep us all safe." And then on a side note, he tells me, "Your dirt work helped save our fence line and I'm sure much of our grass. Thank you again for all your hard work and resources." And that was from Kai Booker. And as, as a non-fireman that just happens to come out on some of these scenes, I, I gotta tell you, folks, if you're not, you can't see, you can't see enough of what they do out there. It's, uh, it's truly amazing how these men and women put themselves on the line like that for us at any time of day or night. And we need to really, you see a fireman, we need to thank him. That's all I got.
Thank you for that, Commissioner.
We appreciate what, what all the firemen do in this, there's a bunch of them here in the room, actually. You give up your personal time to get out there and get these fires knocked down, limit the amount of damage. And you're to be commended for what you do.
Thank you, Judge.
I need a, uh, motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.